All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order, Board of Education, meeting February 27, 2020. Secretary, take attendance? Oh, nope. All right, Pledge of Allegiance. It's on the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for Jackie to be zoomed. Before we take attendance, can I have a motion to have Jackie to be able to zoom our meeting?
I move that Jackie Al-Sayed be able to attend this meeting remotely.
Can we have some discussion? Because I saw her son on CNN the other night, maybe we should let him participate in the panel.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Secretary, take attendance.
All board members are present and Jackie is present remotely.
Public comment. First is Judy Avola. Public comment, limited to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Judy Avola, Director of Community Relations and Marketing with Wild Lake Schools, and I'm the chairperson for the Michigan Schools Public Relations Association, EMSPRAW Awards Committee. The awards committee has several, had several entries for the 2019-20 Gold Medalion Award. The Gold Medalion nominees are evaluated on the stringent communication process and how it is followed and the ultimate results of the communication program. Michigan Schools Public Relations Awards Committee evaluates nominations on how the programs and projects advance responsible school communications. EMSPRAW received a nomination for the work the Bloomfield Hills Communications Team did on maintaining the community trust after students hacked into the district's major database. In accord with public relations standards, responsible communications includes research, planning, communication and implementation, and evaluation. Our EMSPRAW awards team concluded that the Bloomfield Hills Communications Team did ample research, including looking at common resources for cybersecurity and how to talk with children of all ages about digital citizenship. These resources were put on your website and they were used when communicating to parents to explain the incident. Planning included working with key individuals, including the district administration, the district's insurance company, legal counsel, and of course, local law enforcement officials who assisted with the incident. The communications team established three key messages. The student behavior was not in line with the values of the Bloomfield Hills Schools, with what the Bloomfield Hills Schools espouses or what is taught in Bloomfield Hills Schools. The vulnerability has been resolved and all information in the system is safe. Establishing safety for all in communication is really the definition of proactive communications. Bloomfield Hills Schools is committed to investigating the incident and communicating appropriately about it. Bloomfield Hills Communications Team used a "we are here for you" posture to ensure parents' concerns were addressed. Communication and implementation. Some of the communications shared on your district website included letters that were sent to families, the website Q&amp;A document that was given to parents and the media for information in an easy format, a video that was produced by your former superintendent, Dr. Rob Glass, carefully explaining what had happened and the steps being taken to resolve the issue. Emails and other written pieces were framed in a compassionate tone and they were edited for ease of understanding and educational and technical jargon were removed as much as possible. Evaluation. In the week following the release of the incident, the video was viewed over 2,000 times with an average retention rate of 46%. Your webpage received over 5,200 page views with an average time on the page of over two minutes. Even more impressive was roughly 67% of visitors returned to your site at a later time to learn more about the incident. Social sentiment for the 10 days post-incident was 55% positive and 39% neutral. Feedback received was overwhelmingly positive from stakeholders. Of the many emails that you received, many were thanking the district for your efforts and not blaming the district for the incident. Most of the calls on your hotline were from parents who wanted someone to walk them through the password reset process over the phone. Most importantly, and publicly, the media coverage ranged from local journalists to Forbes Magazine and was mostly positive. Most importantly, the media coverage was accurate. And each report shared the same information, including information about how the vulnerability was resolved. One reporter stated, "Overall, we're seriously impressed with the way the staff handled the hack. They hired a forensic investigator, set up a dedicated FAQ page, prepared password resets, got the superintendent to apologize in a YouTube video, and communicated the incident's details clearer than most Fortune 500 companies." Crisis such as a digital breach or hacking into systems, just like bomb threats and a host of accidents or incidents that happen in public schools, all happen. What's important is how they are handled. Bloomfield Hills Schools Administrative and Communications Team handled the issue well. It was addressed in a timely way and information that was easy to understand was disseminated to parents and to the media. For all these reasons, I'm happy to present the EMSPRAW Gold Medalion Award plaque to Shira Good and to Superintendent Pat Watson and to congratulate the board on receiving this award. So if I could, I'd like to have Shira come forward and have Superintendent Watson come forward. Congratulations, congratulations. So deserved, so deserved. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and attention tonight and congratulations on the award.
Phil?
Hello, my name is Phila Liberty. I am the interim president of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association and I'm here tonight to inform the Board of Education and the community at large that our Board of Directors and Executive Board have voted to endorse the passage of the May 5 bond proposal. The decision to involve ourselves in this election was not taken lightly. As educators in a wonderful district that we care very much about, the ramifications on our students that the passage of this bond could provide were simply too great to remain silent. With the passing of this bond, my members will be able to move their instructional practice forward in ways that the current facilities simply do not allow. Collaboration that can occur organically with facilities that assist in that rather than hinder it. Learning spaces that fit the specific needs of all students all the time. And of course, maybe most importantly, upgraded security infrastructure that ensures that my members and most importantly, our students feel safe while participating in a world-class public education. It is for these reasons that I, as interim president of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association, look forward to supporting and working hard on making sure that the bond passes on May 5. And we also urge the Bloomfield Hills School community to vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. President's Report.
So as many of you have seen, our superintendent continues to make himself visible at our buildings. In addition to the bond campaign, Mr. Watson is still going through his 90-day plan, which includes meeting as many stakeholders as possible. Speaking of the bond, and as we just heard a public comment, I want to acknowledge and thank the Bloomfield Hills Education Association for voting to endorse the bond. We are excited about the collaborative effort of our entire community working together for what's in the best interest of our students. We've always been fortunate to have teachers who are connected to the school community long after the day is over and the bond is no exception. It is our mission to inform the entire community about the bond and provide the details necessary for each and every voter to make an informed decision on May 5. In addition to information sharing, we've been busy working on a collaborative governance with our superintendent and making sure that he feels at home in Bloomfield. Although nothing initiates a superintendent facet than calling two snow days back-to-back as our number one priority is the safety of our students. The board is committed to transparent and responsive interaction and we urge those of you with questions to visit our bond website at www.bloomfield.org/bond and look out for our videos that we just released showing many reasons why the bond is so important for our students and our community.
Superintendent's Report.
So just an update on my 90-day plan since the last time. I've had four more student shadows. I was able to shadow a first grader at Conant, a third grader at Lone Pine, a sixth grader at West Hills Middle School, and a ninth grader at Bloomfield Hills High School. I've also now completed all of my one-on-one meetings with the central office staff. And so those were all very informative and I was able to learn a lot and gather quite a bit of information. I've attended staff meetings at Conant, East Hills, Bloomfield Hills High School, Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and Bowers Academy. I've attended two additional PTO meetings, one at Conant and one at Fox Hills. Also continuing on with my 90-day plan, I've toured the DHH program. I met with the friends of different learners. I met with Senator Rosemary Behr. I met with Bloomfield Township Fire and Police Chief. I attended the Preservation Bloomfield Meeting. I attended the Friends of the Farm Meeting. I joined the Bloomfield Birmingham Chamber of Commerce. Had the opportunity and honor to observe the dismantling racism workshop. I attended the Oakland County Superintendent's Association Meeting. I participated in the winter sledding challenge. Came in second, losing to the Gucci shoe sled, which was quite amazing. And I had the ability to call two snow days, which is something I was definitely looking forward to. Safety first. And I'm also looking forward to the next 30 days and completing everything that was on my 90-day entry plan. And then having the opportunity to meet with all the board members and kind of share what I've learned along the way and kind of what the next steps are. Thank you.
Busy. Consent Agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from regular meeting of January 30. Request to approve minutes of a study session of February 13. Request to approve minutes of a board workshop of February 17. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve financial contract payment, sorry, final contract payments. And request to approve non-resident tuition rates for the 2020-21 school year. I'm going to read them because I think there's been some interest in this. So these are the rates for the 2020-21 school year. Elementary school tuition is $12,000, middle school tuition is $12,000, and high school tuition is $12,000 per year. And finally, request to approve HR actions as attached.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, consent passes, general discussion, report of FFLA, Howard.
All right. We had an FFLA meeting on February 13, a few weeks ago, and we had a pretty packed agenda. We had about six items on the agenda. The first one was, there was some discussion about preschool pricing. Karen Hildebrand, our controller, presented, along with Lisa Breelak from the preschool program. I had not realized the tuition that we charge is different at Fox Hills versus Conant and Lone Pine. We have three campuses for preschool. And the Fox Hill tuition was, is about $2,000 or $3,000 per year lower. So the proposal that the administration has gone forward with is to increase the Fox Hills pricing by about $350 or so. So the new pricing for next year will be for a full day, about $7,400. And then there are different prices for full, half-day and then three-day and two-day. So that was the first discussion. The second one was what Lisa just went through, which was the tuition for out-of-district students that decide to come to our district and because we are not schools of choice, we do charge a tuition. So that's what Lisa talked to you about. And previously, we used to have different pricing for elementary, middle, and high school. And as you just heard Lisa say, we're going to have uniform pricing of $12,000 per year for whether you're a younger child or a high school student. The third item was we had a continuation of the discussion we had in January related to mileage reimbursement. There was an existing process going on within a central office for a certain number of the employees to have a different type of reimbursement process for their mileage. And instead of as an expense report, they get it as part of their salary. So we had some discussion on that. Tina Kostick, our CFO, reached out to Plant Moran and determined that really what we're doing is nothing wrong. The only thing is that the employees, because it is part of their compensation, are getting charged tax, both federal tax, Michigan tax, and Social Security and Medicare tax. So that the amount of money that we spend or that comes out of our pocket does not all hit their pocket because they have to pay the government. So we talked about different alternatives to that. And Plant Moran had one proposal. And then another proposal was put on the table of, instead of having to do an expense report every month, kind of detailing exactly how many miles they drove every day, there's a possibility of doing what's called sampling, where they can take a representative sample of the year and present that to the CFO. And as long as the CFO is amenable to that, then that's, they could take that as an expense report and therefore no taxes taken out whatsoever. That's just expense reimbursement. So Tina and Kelly will review that alternative and anything else that they can come up with. And we asked for a report back by the end of the school year of what they think they're going to do. The next item was technology. And David Shulkin gave us a presentation on cybersecurity. And we just heard a little bit of some of the issues that are happening internally, but obviously, we have external threats that also, that we have to protect against. So David gave us an extensive presentation and we'll be following up over the next few months with some cost estimates in terms of what we're going to have to do to enhance our hardware and software to protect ourselves from the incursions that are continually happening from outsiders trying to hack our systems. The next item, we went through an annual report that we get, which goes through our legal cost. And in 2018-19, we spent $245,000 on legal expenses, which is pretty close to, we spend between $100,000 and $200,000 or so every year. So it wasn't, it was on the high side, but it wasn't astronomically high versus prior years. And there's a breakdown that I can, the FFLA team has it, and if any of their other school board members would like to see it. I'm not sure whether Kelly put this on to the weekly update, but if she didn't, I can give you a copy of that. The final thing was there were some questions that came from some school board members related to some issues that was brought up in a school law and finance class that we had in the end of January on contracted staff. And different school districts handled contractors differently, but we were reassured by Kelly that what we do is perfectly in keeping with the proper way of doing it. So there really is no issue. Again, the law firm that put on Clark Hill and Plant Moran said that there were some different ways of doing it where, which wasn't as acceptable, but Kelly assured us that we are doing it the proper way. There was also discussion briefly about the possibility of putting no-gun signs in each one of our buildings. And we were told by Brian Goby that this was discussed by Cabinet a number of years ago, and the decision was made not to do it. But because there is interest at this point of the possibility, that Brian will bring it back to Cabinet along with Officer Dornberger. And we'll have a discussion with Cabinet and we will await a recommendation coming from our superintendent on what direction the Cabinet and the administration thinks that we should go in. And then we, as a board, can, you know, continue that conversation and come to a resolution one way or the other. So that was FFLA. Any questions? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for following up. I know at least one of those questions came from me. I just wanted to say, the no-gun signs, the reason I think it's important for Cabinet to revisit it now is because we've had an Ann Arbor case, which has come down between the last time they've looked at it and this time. And that case says that it's up to each individual district to decide whether they want open carry guns to be allowed on their premises. Concealed guns, not, still not allowed. We have been really explicit in our policy that we do not allow that. But there's been case law recently that has said, if you don't put a visitor on notice upon entering your buildings, that you don't allow open carry, and you really can't be expected, you can't hold them necessarily to that standard. So having something in your policy really isn't putting somebody on notice. Having a sign at the door, entryway to, or main entrance of your buildings is really the best and right now, only way to properly put somebody on notice that you don't allow open carry guns on your premises. So that was the issue, I think, that precipitated the revisiting of signs on the buildings.
Any other comments? Jennifer, report of BIC.
Hi. So the Board Instructional Committee, or BIC, we met on February 20, and we were joined by Aileen Meyer, who is the administrator of Bowers Academy. We had two main things on our agenda, the first of which was an update on enrollment and programming at Bowers Academy. This year has been very successful. We've had a large reduction in absences and tardiness and more social-emotional learning components. A lot of community building has gone on. We discussed our enrollment numbers, which are currently 24, and was presented us with the information that we could add 20 students to the program without having to increase staffing. So right now, there are 4.7 FTEs employed at the academy. We are looking at tuition and we are looking at the possibility of cooperative agreements with other districts that Superintendent Watson is going to look into. And we decided to push the matter of tuition over to FFLA for your consideration at your next meeting on March 12, since our purview is more of the instruction. The students had an alumni brunch this year for the first time, which was really exciting. They had, so the current students could see, you know, the future, so to speak, and what good things are in store for them after the program. We were informed by Aileen about different programs of mentorship and apprenticeships and student partnerships of the Bowers students with the prep program and with things that are happening at both Way and West Hills. We talked about the fact, it was presented to us that sometimes the tuition at Bowers has limited enrollment. And so we just very preliminarily were ideating about possible scholarships or partnerships with the foundation, some way to mitigate the effects of tuition. And then the last thing about Bowers that we discussed is that Learning Services Team is working on implementing an independent reporting program for Bowers Academy for the state dashboard item. So that is, Sandra is currently looking into it and she is going to bring us a report at our March 12 study session. Okay, so item number two on our agenda was an update on the diploma program and the IB program at our high school. I gave you guys two handouts here that you can just peruse in your own time. One is IB and the other is AP, just some of the numbers that Sarah Fairman gave us. Right now, we have IB and AP students in grades 10, 11, and 12. The IB classes are art, math, biology, Spanish, English Language Arts, German, French, Chinese, world religions, sports, health, music. And then online, there are two math classes and one psychology class. So these offerings involve about 25 different classes with about 15 teachers involved. Currently this year, we have 429 of the 1,678 high school students taking at least one IB class, so that is one quarter of our high school population. And if you look at the bodies-to-classes ratio, each, the average student taking at least one IB or one AP class is taking about two. So that's just the average. Our DP students, the ones going for the full IB diploma, they of course are taking six IB classes, both in the junior and the senior year. One thing that we learned at this meeting was that IB and AP as organizations are intentionally merging curricula or just bringing it closer together. And that is a good thing because it gives teachers more flexibility. We actually, if, when you look at this list, you'll see that we actually have some classes that are happening, you know, in the same room at the same time with the same teacher that are both AP and IB. And they fulfill both curricula. And then the student can choose at the end of the year, they can take one exam, the other exam, or both. So that is, that is an area of flexibility that I thought was really interesting. The way that rankings go, we, in terms of both of these programs, it's threefold. So any district is rated on how many students are taking an AP or an IB class. Also, of those students, what percentage of them actually choose to take the exam at the end of the year? And then the third facet is how well are they doing on the exam? So it's a multifaceted ranking system and it was brought to the committee's attention that Learning Services is working on increasing the percentage of the students who test at the end of the year. Right now, it's about 79% for the AP program and it's about 31% for the IB program. The full DP students, of course, the test is mandatory. They are 100%. It's the, it's the students who are taking some IB courses and not the full DP who have the option of testing or not testing at the end of the year. All right. We, next, the, so the DP program, which is being, or the IB program, I should say, which is being head-up by Sarah Fairman, our Director of Secondary Education, and by Jessica Lupone, one of our assistant principals at the high school. They have done a lot to study and stabilize the IB program. And in the next year, they're also, they're looking at the actual class sizes, which are on the paper. We're looking to see how we can maximize larger, not large classes, but you know, a critical mass of students in each one of the IB or AP classes. So basically, not having classes with like seven kids in them. And we're all, they're also going to be looking at enrollment of both AP and IB through an equity and inclusion lens, studying our exact demographic numbers of which students are actually taking the classes and making sure that opportunity and, you know, taking advantage of the opportunity is being done in an equitable fashion. We want, basically, we want representative numbers of all of our students in our AP and IB classes. And then the last thing we talked about is that now that we're starting the Pathways Program this fall, that we're going to have to keep a close eye on numbers because instead of two specialized academic facets, we're now going to have three. And so, you know, although our high school isn't small, it's not super huge either. And we're just going to have to keep analyzing what the metrics are for these three different programs and making sure that our students, we balance all the opportunities we want to give them with having critical masses in the classes.
So just a couple of things, I think, I want to call it. So first of all, in Bowers, you didn't get a chance to mention the partnership that is really enhanced with the farm and the new store that the students are really developing their entrepreneurial experience and getting ready to start up a store at the farm, working at the school, and be able to have a great partnership in products and learn a lot in the process. So I think that's one piece of Bowers, which I think is pretty exciting, that's newly developing. And then I'm not 100% positive, but my belief is that as far as the AP and IB testing, typically, you have had to, a student would have to sign up many months in advance to take those exams. They can't decide at the end, if they want to take the test, they can decide at the end if they don't want to show up for it. And that's been part of the problem. And the equity And the equity piece on that as well, is we have many students who pay to register to take those exams, but we want to be sure that every student who has the opportunity has the means to be able to register to take those exams as well.
Thank you, Cynthia.
On the Bowers, could you run through again the student counts so that, how many kids, did I, 24 students right now?
24 is current enrollment, yes.
And if, and if we keep the current teacher body, we can go up how many more?
20 more.
20 more, so that would be up to 44. So did, did you find out what the capacity is of the building?
So the, as I understand it, the building capacity itself is 50 to 60. However, what we have, what's been presented to us several times is that the running of Bowers Academy doesn't necessitate all the students being onsite at the same time. Some of them may be out part of the day for apprenticeships, they may be in another one of our buildings doing a cooperative program. And so in theory, and I don't have an exact number on this, you could have more than the building capacity.
So there's a building capacity and there's a program capacity.
And there's a program, exactly, yeah.
So it would be interesting, as we go forward with talking about tuition in other districts, to have some targets in terms of where we think we want to go over the next number of years. One, to nail down exactly what the building capacity and then the program capacity is, and then do we want to get to that level, or do we want to be at 90% or whatever? So that way, we sort of have a trajectory in terms of where we think we want to go, and then strategies in terms of how we get there. And kind of a similar conversation related to the DP and the AP on the equity. It would be wonderful if we could, again, have targets in terms of where we think, count-wise, so that the, the population of the children in DP and AP look like our total student body, how many children that would be? And then, similar to the Bowers, what the strategies are to get us there. Some of this might be, you know, working in the middle school.
Exactly, yes. Sarah, and Sarah briefly went into some of those things, but making sure that all along the pathway.
Yeah, so that we can, if administration and Sarah can enumerate what those strategies are, and then that way, over the next year or two, as those strategies then go rolled out, we can monitor how we're doing against those strategies and, you know, if necessary, find, the administration would then fine-tune them if we're either over or underachieving those, the strategies are. So thank you, that's wonderful.
Well, we have, we have students who sign up to take those exams, but because they are not requirements for the, for the, for the course to be, to take the AP or IP exam, you find students, I'll take mine as an example, who was taking AP Environmental Science, decided she was going to go to art school and was never going to be inside of another science classroom, and would rather go to a track meet than take the exam. I think we have a lot of students who fall in that, that kind of mindset. By the time of the end, get to the end of their senior year, they're in a different place than where they were when they signed up to take those tests, which they wanted to look great to the colleges when they were setting their, setting their, their agenda for the year ahead. So, you know, I think part of it is it's going to depend on, do we think that requiring the, taking the exam as a part of the course to be an incentive for kids to take those exams? Because by the time they get to the senior, end of senior year, if they don't have to take them, they're not, many of them are not.
No, and you have many that don't pay for them, that decide early on they're not going to take them. My daughter had six AP classes one year, and there was no way she was taking six exams at the end of the year, so she just picked her, and I just want to say, I really have always liked, I know it hurts us in the rankings, I know it's a, it's a factor. I have always liked the fact that we have not required our students to take it. I would really be against forcing that issue, even for ranking sake, because to me personally, it's not really what's best for students, it's not, it has nothing to do with why many of them sign up to take the classes, it's very restrictive, and for what purpose? A ranking? I would be against it. I really think that we are one of the few districts that don't require the students to take it as a requirement for taking the AP exam, and I love that.
When I was talking about targets for DP and AP, that's up to the administration and Charlie to determine whether target, whatever targets we set, are they targets for participation in the class or taking the exam? I don't, that's, they can set the targets however they want, but whatever those targets are, and whichever one of those criteria they use, that's fine, but that's what we would then, you know, monitor and hold ourselves accountable for.
But I think the heads-up power is coming because as a board, we can say, one of our goals is to be, improve our ranking. And what they're saying is, this is something that's going to hurt us in our ranking, so we have to be able to say, that's okay. As a board, we would prefer you make choices based on what's best for students, not rankings.
Once we get into that level of detail on the rankings versus the exams, we can obviously have that discussion. I don't know how the, how the two correlate.
I do have a, I do have a question. So, so what was the theme of, so why do many more students take the AP exam based on these stats than the IB?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's a great question, and we, frankly, we did not, the purpose of the discussion was IB, and so we didn't have time to get into a heavy-duty comparison of the two. Sarah actually emailed me the AP data a few days after the meeting, just because she was analyzing both at the same time, but I think we should hold that question and discuss it.
Okay, and then just a question, just looking at some of these, what is DP Course Studies I and DP Course Studies II? Do you know what that is? I mean, the enrollment's light, I just don't know what that is.
I think that is the enrollment of the DP diploma program. I don't think it's a class, no. I think it's just the official registering.
What is the number of students who will be graduating with the DP? This is pre-exam passage, so it's the number who will be walking at graduation, I guess, as part of the DP program?
I guess if I'm looking at it, is it eight and seven?
It's seven seniors this year, it's eight current juniors who will be seniors next year, and they have a projected enrollment of 18 right now for the current sophomores.
All right, and do we have any idea how many who tried to get into the IA were wait-listed as ninth graders? Or who didn't get in altogether?
This year, I think there were 70-some-odd in the lottery this year for 30 spots.
My, I guess my question is, I know it's between, you know, there's, they apply in as eighth graders, really. Why don't more people that, students who don't get into the IA, why don't they explore getting the diploma through the DP program at the high school?
Yeah, that's, that's a $64,000 question, right? I think, I don't have the answer, but I've been floated several theories, one of which is simply student-to-student relationships. You know, you, the DP diploma is very precise, right? You can't be off by a class, so it does limit your choices. And, and that is one thing that they counsel the incoming IA students quite heavily on. You're, you're making a choice to do an all honors program, that's the choice you're making, and henceforth, you're not going to have choices. You're not going to be able to take, you know, computer science or this or that. So I think like my ninth grader at the high school, he's like, you know, my buddy says, come over and take this class with me, and I want to take that class with my buddy, and then right then and there, you're off the DP track. I don't know about whether promotion among counselors and teachers is a factor, I can't really speak to that, but I think there are a lot of reasons.
Because, I mean, I feel, sorry, if they're, it seems to me like if they're going to make the commitment as a ninth grader for four years, going to a school where they don't have transportation, I mean, it's, it seems like a much bigger commitment for a longer period of time.
Well, I mean, I think there's other, my son went there, I mean, there's other factors why people go to the IA. It's not solely because of the IB diploma program, that's what they're taking. So there may be other factors that, why people chose it and if they don't get in.
Sorry, what, just, can you give me a couple of examples?
It's a magnet, it's a top-rated magnet school.
Okay.
So.
Well, the side, like for my daughter, that she wanted to be in a smaller school, so that can be a factor for some kids?
Superintendent Watson told us a few months ago, talking about branding, and really, you think about it, you've got at least five programs. You have the IA program, the DP program in our high school, the DP, or the taking IB classes but not going for the DP diploma, the AP classes route, and then none of the above. And trying to understand the brand of what, you know, what type of student goes into each one of those five categories, and what our objective is, or target, or where do we think kids will be in five years from now in terms of, you know, where we are and where we want to be, and then evolve our, our marketing campaign and our communication campaign towards that end, whatever that is. Obviously, students have choice, but, you know, what happened over the last number of years is the number of DP kids sort of plummeted, and.
Well, it went back up.
Why is, so we really need to be very, very intentional about where, you know, what those different programs are, what the pros and cons of them are, and where we want to be as a district. Do we want more IA seats, or do we want more DP? Or do we really want to be, not pushing, but, but promoting AP? I mean, it seems that AP is sort of where our generation was, but not as much now. So, but we need to be more, with more foresight about where we're going and not just sort of have it catch-as-catch-can.
Well, to that point, Howard, I think one of the themes in our meeting was that the IB program, most people in the community consider as very valuable because of the depth of study, the philosophy behind it, and that having that offering in our high school, even if one doesn't choose to do the DP program, is valuable in itself because of the choice and because of the option to pursue a depth of study. So that, that was sort of the theme of what we were talking about.
One of the ish, not issues, but things to consider is doing a DP program and really the entire IB program with PYP and MYP, it's very expensive.
Yeah, you're right.
And not to say that we're going to put a dollar sign on this, but at the same time, if we have diminishing need or demand, we as an organization need to think about what the costs are, but also, we got to bring communications into it because it does have an image on our website. So this is a complicated discussion, all I'm saying.
Well, we need facts too, right? Because I, I have heard that many times, and so I asked Sarah at the BIC meeting, how much does it cost us to have, to offer even one IB class at this school every year? And she said $7,200.
Well, but there's certifications, there's training, there's.
All right, Cynthia, Cynthia, you have a comment?
Well, another reason, when you're talking about branding, and one reason that we went to an IB, all IB district, was that we also wanted the idea of outside evaluation, that one of the, one of the pieces of the IB is that those IB exams are sent someplace else in the world to be judged and to be, to be graded, and it's outside verification, that we're on it, that we're part of a global society and we are keeping up with, with some other highly incentivized nations in the world. And it helps us, I think, levitate all of our programs in the process, and it also helps them encourage more international business people to come into our community and bring their children and know that they can be able to go back to their home countries with a, with a common program.
I totally agree. All I'm saying is that we as an organization, this decision was made, you know, many, many boards ago, you know, 10 or 20 years ago.
Actually, not that long.
We as an organization just need to have a full study of the entire DP, IB, IA world, and just say, as a board, as an organization, we either want or don't want the program, I'm hoping we say we want it, but with our eyes open, how much does it cost and where do we want to have in terms of actual student participation? So that will then direct our marketing through our guidance counselors to start recruiting people. Hopefully, the, the students and the parents agree with us, but we really need to just have a plan.
But I think it was important that Jennifer did mention that there were over 400 students who are, are taking IB classes. There may only be a handful who are taking the full diploma, but there's over 400 distinct students.
All I'm saying is, we just need to take all this stuff and put it on a piece of paper and a multi-documentary document, that's all.
And I think also what Howard is saying is, to get the diploma, I, I mean, I have kids that have taken those IB classes and they're outstanding, but to get the diploma, it also requires you to take other classes that not a lot of kids are taking. So in the same way that we're cautioning with middle school and, you know, of having, if we, if we don't pass the bond, we're going to have to cut curriculum because the cohort sizes are small and class sizes are too small. These classes are very small. I don't think they're cost-effective on the face of this document.
I think, I think what Jennifer and BIC has started is that discussion. And, you know, if you look at, and I think they've given us a comprehensive analysis here, and, you know, I think the team can highlight four or five courses, whether it's IB bio or whatever those are. Like what route are they going to do? Is it online to get it, or are they going to keep promoting it?
Sarah explicitly confirmed that that is exactly what they're looking at right now. They, we want the classes, we want the program, but we, we don't want classes with fewer than 10 students in them.
So one more question. Cynthia, you mentioned that this gives us an opportunity to have our students' tests reviewed on a national, an international, how do they do? How do our students do? How do they do compared to other?
I haven't seen that data.
Do we have any of that data?
Well, they, they, well, I think one of the questions and concerns is a lot of them don't take the exam, so they don't.
Well, the ones who have, who are walking across the stage from the diploma program, I would assume if they've gone through the rigorous curriculum of all those classes, would sit for the exam.
The scores to statistics were presented in the meeting in the fall, so we can get those. There was a PowerPoint that showed the world average, the national average, BHHS, and IA.
I'm asking because I saw the IA scores.
I don't remember, I don't remember the numbers.
I saw the IA scores, you know, chart like you mentioned at a JSC meeting. Am I, am I right in saying they were like second in the, in the country?
They're high.
They were extremely high. Do we have any idea if the DP student scores are comparable?
It's lower, but it, I think it's, I want to say it's still above national slash world average, but I don't remember the exact numbers.
All I'm asking is that we do a plan, it's comprehensive, we go through all these issues, we put on a piece of paper saying, this is where we're going. We then execute it over two or three years, and then in 2022 or '23, we reevaluate it. But we need to really not just do it piecemeal, but really come up with a plan.
Okay, I got it. Lisa, board policy?
Okay. The Board Policy Procedures and Practices Committee, consisting of Jennifer, Howard, and myself, and from administration, Kelly Bull and Superintendent Watson, met on February 19th. The agenda consisted of reviewing all current regulations and board policy to see where we were in terms of updates, parking-lotted material for the future, and items that we needed to coordinate to make sure all district policies and regulations were consistent. This will be helpful, if not essential, as we hold, as we review the build-out measurable goals for the strategic plan. We discussed our objective of the committee so that going forward, we have a clear set of goals from which to do our work. We are prioritizing the board operating procedure, which will serve as similar to board bylaws first, and with the understanding that if something of immediate concern arises, we will notify, we will modify our agenda and accommodate that. Eventually, we'll have a board operating procedure to recommend to the full board for approval. We agreed that this would be the most efficient way to create the board operating procedure as well as address the board policy parking-lotted items. We're going to get both of those documents in first draft form, so the entire board can review them and then vote in their totality, and rather than have Kelly come to board, to the podium at board meetings and make piecemeal presentations to the full board, which our two-step modification process requires. And you might have noticed, we changed the name of the committee from policy to policy procedures and practice. Many, including the three of us, were unclear about the distinct functions of all of our documents. For example, the board policy below constitutional, federal, and state law is the document that takes precedence. Then administrative regulations, including board operating procedures. Then administrative regulations, including board operating procedure, the athletic code of conduct and student handbook, for example, provide more specific guidance. And after that, there are several written and unwritten practices that help our district at every level to run smooth. Ultimately, we hope to have a user-friendly online system of documents that we can reference quickly so that we can govern transparently and justly.
Any questions? Okay, bond update. I guess it's going to be Andy. Unless Brian's hiding somewhere.
This is just my, I'm accessorizing tonight.
Sorry about that.
So let me make sure I can pull this up. I'm right-handed thankfully. Because the left hand is out of commission. I think it's a different one here. We're looking to see if we get the right presentation up here.
Yeah, you can make the comment. Well, go ahead Cynthia.
So while Andy's getting set up there for general discussion, I just wanted to call out at our January 30th board meeting. We had important decisions to be making about the, the bond and we were kind of preoccupied with thinking about all the aspects of that. And I just wanted to mention that at our consent agenda on January 30th, we accepted the retirements of three teachers who have made a wonderful contribution to our school district. And with the three of them, they represent 95 years with three people of service to the children in our school district. And I just wanted to mention Jennifer Hunt, 35, 25 years, Mary Honeyman, 30 years. And Dan Badgley, 40 years, who are all retiring at the end of the school year. And I know we'll have other opportunities as the year continues to recognize their service to us. But when we do make a, a motion to accept somebody's retirement, it's a, it's a major milestone in that employee's life. And I don't like to let them get unrecognized for the time service to our children, that those thousands of children whose lives they have changed.
Thank you.
I'd clap to that, but it's awkward for me. So I guess I'd like to start by thanking Phil Liberty for stepping up here and sharing the support that the teachers really have for this bond. And that's, you know, I would say the, the most important update that I could provide is the energy and excitement and enthusiasm about the opportunity that this, this proposal will provide for our students' learning. There, there's some really positive momentum and that's what I'm hearing from our teachers, our staff, other fellow administrators and, and lots of parents and families as well. So we have a short presentation, going to run through some of the things you've probably seen a little bit, but it'll be good for, for those that, out there that are watching to get an overview as to a, a big part of the why. Why are we doing this? What are the, what's the reason? What's the, the impetus for us to really take this, this huge step? And so, you know, when you look at some of these photos, it's, they predate me, I think. And it's, it's pretty, pretty fascinating to look. Little slide presentation, there's the beep and then you advance the slide roll. I do remember that technology. You know, our buildings were constructed in the 50s, 60s, 70s. Many of them are around 60 years old. And education has really evolved dramatically over the last 60 years. And while we've tried our best to evolve our buildings, we have been working within the constraints of those buildings as well. You know, you look at the services that are provided in schools today. Such a comprehensive programming op, program for students where you have occupational therapy, physical therapy, school psychologists, social workers, social emotional learning. I don't know that my elementary teachers were as, as back in the 70s, 80s were, were, they, they did things that were inherently social emotional learning, but that term just didn't exist back in the 80s. So, you know, it's, it really shows that the facilities were constructed at a time where many of the services that we have and opportunities that we have for kids just didn't exist and weren't even thought of at the time. In the 70s, we had 11,000 students, right around 11,000 students in Bloomfield Hills and we're about half of that right now. And, and so we have had closures of buildings over the years. And really as I advance to the next slide, you see our current configuration. And this is a configuration that we are in based on some of the, some decisions that were made 10 to 15 years ago. And we knew at the time, we were operating buildings far under capacity, which is not fiscally responsible. So some really good decisions, quality decisions were made a dozen years ago to, to, while they're difficult decisions, they were, they were fiscally responsible decisions to shift into the configuration that we have right now. When we closed Pine Lake, when we closed Hickory Grove and added the upper elementaries into our middle schools. We knew we weren't harming kids educationally. We created some neat opportunities actually, when you talk about veteran learners, eighth graders working with fourth graders or fifth graders. Some of those, some of those opportunities do exist now because of those decisions that were made. But you can see we all, we're all Blackhawks. We all end up at Bloomfield Hills High School. And that's fed by three different middle schools that all, that have two different configurations right now. We have some buildings that are fourth grade through eighth grade and a building that's fifth grade through eighth grade. The fifth grade through eighth grade building happens to be our largest middle school right now because it is fed by two elementary schools that are kindergarten through fourth grade, whereas East Hills and West Hills are the smaller of the two middle schools fed by K3 buildings. And as I know the board is very much aware and the community is aware, we had shifted East Hills configuration, moving the fourth graders from Eastover just a couple of years ago up to East Hills. So it's created some inconsistency within our district. And so depending on where you live, there's some slight differences in, in, in the pathway that you take in order to get to Bloomfield Hills High School. So the, the plan that, that we have proposed and that is a part of the May 5th ballot is, again, we're all Blackhawks. We know that. We're all going to end up at the high school, which is servicing our ninth through 12th graders. We would have two middle schools, a, a newly constructed instructional wing at the Lasser site, utilizing the assets that we do have within our district currently in the auditorium and the rec, in the gym and fieldhouse that do exist at the Lasser site. That, that particular middle school would be sixth, eighth grade. It would be the, the middle school that students at Wei and Eastover would attend as they matriculated from fifth grade to sixth grade. Wei would maintain its current location with some additions and renovations, significant renovations. Eastover would take over the East, East Hills building, which again is utilizing the best assets that we have within our district. And then if you look on the other side of this, this flow chart here, you see the South Middle School, which would be at Bloomfield Hills Middle School current site, fed by Lone Pine and Conan. And similar to Wei and Eastover, Conan would receive significant renovations in addition. And Lone Pine would take over the West Hills building, again utilizing the best assets that we have, the ones that that, that would, would house these students in the most appropriate manner. And from a preschool standpoint, we would have two preschools based on the data that we have from within the last couple of years where the demand is. And that's along the telegraph corridor and the east side of the district. So you would see Eastover, the build, Eastover's building would now become a preschool, which would facilitate all of the, the moving of the preschool from the Fox Hills site to Eastover. And Conan would receive in addition onto their preschool to provide more preschool programming at that site. So we get into the why, why all of this? It's a huge undertaking. We know it's a $200 million bond, a very significant change. And if you've seen the videos that came out today, I, if you haven't seen them, I encourage you to watch them. They do get into a lot of the why and, and you can, you can see, you know, a little glimpse into many of the buildings that exist right now. Cohort size is a, is a huge challenge with our current setup. When you look at West Hills Middle School, which I can speak very intelligently about as I spend, you know, half my waking hours are spent there. We have, we have groups of students that are about 110, 115 students, 120 students per grade level. This creates some dramatic challenges with our programming. As we look at trying to populate classes like band orchestra, we, world languages. We end up with class sizes of 10 to 15 students sometimes, sometimes even below that. And, and offering the students the three years of the same language, you're making that commitment to run courses that are again, are 10 kids in the class. As I, as I heard the discussion about DP and the different programming and the expenses that are involved with that, it just is not as fiscally responsible. And then you also get into like at Bloomfield Hills Middle School currently with fifth through eighth grade there, space becomes an issue. If you're trying to run a fifth grade PE class at the same time as an eighth grade PE class, you can't offer as many sections of eighth grade as you really should. So we have PE classes that exceed 50 students at Bloomfield Hills Middle School, which is not an ideal number to have in PE. As you think about technology, technology obviously is an expense that is, is included in this bond. And we've been very responsible with our technology. We have Promethean boards that were installed 15 years ago in our schools. When they were installed, they had a life expectancy of seven to nine years. We have the same Promethean boards. We've been updating projectors here and there. But we've done the best we can to really maintain and, and, and keep it so that when you're projecting in front of the classroom, the kids can actually see what's projected and interact with that board. But those have exceeded their life expectancy and, and some of the capabilities of the interactive capabilities are, are starting to frankly not, not work anymore and despite the efforts of our IT crew. When you look at the, the imbalance of the population in, in the different catchment areas of our elementaries, you have, I believe it's 14 or 15 sections of elementary students at Lone Pine and 24 at Eastover. And so Eastover has a large enough student body to be able to have full-time specials teachers. At the other three elementaries, there's, there's just not enough work for them to, to be employed full-time at one building. So we have a, a situation where the Lone Pine teachers for elementary are also instructing the fourth and fifth graders at West Hills. They're currently working with the same kindergarten through fifth grade students across two buildings. So you can see some of the challenges that exist there. As far as collaboration time goes, when you, when you have so many part-time staff, I think it was one year at West Hills, we had 13 or 15 part-time staff at our building that, or shared staff. When you're piecing together these schedules, you really minimize the opportunities for teachers to collaborate and have that team time where they're effectively working around the same group of kids. How are we going to best meet the needs of, of any particular student? Or how are we going to create this interdisciplinary unit? If they don't have the time to be able to plan that together, it's, it's just not going to happen. So some of these opportunities will be created with this, this new plan. And when you look at, at that last bullet point there, that last column, I already kind of spoke about the, just the imbalance when you look at the populations and the, the distributions across the, the district. It's just, again, it's not consistent. Which we have space challenges in our buildings. When you think about the, the 1960s, 70s, kindergarten was half-day. It was actually half-day up until about 15 or 20 years ago. And as it went from half-day to full-time, all day, you doubled the need of classrooms for kindergarten. So a classroom that was utilized for one group in the morning and then a different group in the afternoon is now utilized all day by one group. Hence needing an additional classroom. So it really squeezed many of the classrooms that we have in our buildings. What were designed as appropriate-sized kindergarten classrooms, oftentimes were cut in half in order to be able to house the, the, the demand and the need that we had.
Hey Andy?
Yes.
Just looking at one of the points, what, what do you mean by parking lots were not designed for students being transported to and from school? Like what do you, what do you mean in the 60s and 70s?
I think what you're talking about is the number of parents and, and families that are driving their students now. So the volume of cars that we have
That's what you mean by that.
On and off our campuses on a day-to-day. We did a traffic study, I think about seven or eight years ago at West Hills. And I think we had 240 cars coming on and off our campus in the morning and afternoon, which obviously creates some huge constraints. West Hills, we're very fortunate where we added an exit lane and created a traffic flow that's much safer. But when you look at schools like Lone Pine Elementary, Conan, where traffic is out on the main roads, backed up onto the main roads during the, the drop-off and pickup times.
Back in the 50s and 60s when I was going to school, many more children were coming on the bus.
I think you had higher bus rate, bus riding rates and
So that, that mix of bus versus individual cars
Correct.
Has changed over the years, but our physical facilities haven't adjusted accordingly.
Okay.
Correct, correct. Yeah, thank you. I, I referenced already in the top middle there where you look at the ancillary services, the OT, PT, social work, school psychologist, speech and, speech and language. When you look at that, those were just pieces that weren't included in the design of the buildings 60 years ago. So we have an opportunity to really plan the proper spaces, sensory rooms, meeting the needs of, of all learners.
So they're not going to have to be in hallways and closets?
Correct. We currently do have old, you know, custodial closets that have been converted into school psychologist offices. And again, if you haven't seen some of the videos, it does show how we've been very creative with our spaces in order to meet the needs of our learners. But again, that's trying to kind of retrofit in with what we have as opposed to designing spaces to, to be the way they should be in order to, to provide those services for students.
As a teacher or administrator, your objective of creativity should not be how you rearrange spaces. It should be teaching creativity to children.
Having the spaces that facilitate that learning is, is what we're after. And, and, and you're right, Howard, when you think about the creativity that's gone into repurposing space and, and, and taking a different lens on, on spaces, it's something that's happened in all of our buildings. So.
What's, and just a question, there was a slide before about PD. So what happens now if you want a PD after school for fourth grade teachers on two different times? Now I'm just curious, who, does someone waiting out? I mean, what, what do you end up doing?
So you bring up a challenge that we've had, we've lived with for, for the last 11 years. When we look at, when you think about our elementary teachers, I'll focus on them. When you think of, we have a new math program as of the last couple of years in Vision. If we want to do professional development with our teachers and give them opportunity to, to have some common learning with our kindergarten through fifth grade, we do have to look creatively. Sometimes if it's a planned professional development day like before school starts, we'll, we'll just adjust everyone's start time to eight o'clock so that the elementary teachers move up. The middle school, the elementary teachers at a middle school building move back a little bit and they meet in the middle. For opportunities where it's, it's maybe a half-day of school, our, our amount of time where we can have them together is limited. We'll end up with about two hours of, of common time. So we may find a learning opportunity for our teachers, the middle school teachers who, whose dismissal time is a little earlier. They may do an hour activity and then two hours of common. And then the elementary would do the two hours of common and an hour activity afterwards. So it, it, it doesn't allow us to maximize the time that we could have together if they were all in a K5 building.
So I, so I know, you know, obviously we had to do what's best, you know, probably from a building usage where we moved fourth grade. So I'm a best practice and this is why we're going to this is the K through five concept at the elementary level and six through eight at the middle school. That's, that, that is a best practice that we need to get back to.
When you look at those learning opportunities and collaborative opportunities amongst staff. And then also I didn't even mention, but you take your, your veteran learners, your fifth graders and those leadership opportunities that fourth and fifth grade would have with those kindergarten first graders. I remember as a former fifth grade teacher at Lone Pine Elementary, we had our second grade reading buddies or our, our Lone Pine buddies. And, and we were partnered up with the second grade class and it gave all of my fifth grade students the opportunity to, to be that mentor for an eight-year-old. And, and those are opportunities that will come back with, with this shift, with this shift back to K5 buildings. In addition to what we already discussed as far as the professional learning opportunities for our staff. You know, they talk about the, the, the top right corner there, the buildings were not designed with student and staff safety in mind. I remember starting in this district 20 years ago and you could walk right in the front door of the building without it being locked. That's a dramatic shift in 20 years. That's a dramatic shift in twenty years. And you think about the security that we have in place currently, while we've taken steps to improve, we have cameras, we have buzzer doors. We don't have that safe, secure entryway. We haven't looked at um installing cameras throughout all of our buildings. You know, film to 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 add security to glass. Uh, there's there's many, many enhancements that will truly make our schools safer environments for our kids. And I love, again, if you haven't had a chance to watch that video, um, that was released today. Uh, the the school, the safety one really talks about, I think Margaret Schultz talks about, it's all about students feeling safe. That's the most important thing in their learning. And when you look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you have to start with safety in order to have learning. And so um that's a huge part of of this bond. Looking at special education spaces, uh, having the appropriate special education spaces, putting it at the forefront as opposed to, at forethought as opposed to the afterthought of what students, what all students need. And uh again, preschool and and your early childhood sixty years ago was not a- as common as it is today. And so really looking at our preschool spaces and making sure that they're appropriate for our our youngest learners. Uh, and we already talked about the parking lot, to really examine the traffic flow on each of our 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 sites and make sure that they're they're safe for getting our students into school and and getting them safely home. Um, and not impeding traffic on main roads and 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 the things that we can really do with this with this bond.
And music spaces?
Absolutely, absolutely. When you look at the the arts and our STEM, design, robotics, um, all of these are huge components within each of the building's uh plans. And and really will increase the opportunities and spaces that we have available, not only for our students, but also for community use as well.
I mean, I was just in your building where the uh trombones were uh out in the hallway trying to practice and we're trying to be heard
Yeah.
In a meeting room right next to them, uh, you know, you need to have those appropriate spaces so the kids don't have to be in the hallways to
It is not uncommon to hear, to hear the small groups practicing in the hallways and and you hear the 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 flow of music coming down the hallway, so. We talked about a few of these, um, really this would create consistency across our district. When you talk about an elementary school in Bloomfield Hills, you'd know you'd be talking about a K-five building as opposed to which elementary and what configuration do they have? And and okay, so they have fourth grade, but the other fourth graders are at a middle school. Um, you'd create a lot more consistency and common experience and transitions for students with this plan. Uh, we've already referenced the staff professional development opportunities. When you look at uh students or staff being on the same schedule, in the same place with the 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 colleagues who are instructing the same curriculum, um, it really creates some wonderful learning opportunities for our staff. And then really preserving the programming, as I referenced earlier, when you look at the cohort size, going to two middle schools is really essential for uh the, for maintaining the programming that we have. When you look at course, uh, again orchestra of of eight to ten kids, um, bec- just because there's not enough students that are fed into that building, it really i- puts programming at risk. So looking at two middle schools, we'd have a a robust population where we should be able to populate all of the courses that we we currently offer at a at a healthy level. I referenced also those opportunities, again, back in our kindergarten through fifth grade buildings of having those veteran learners working with some of our younger learners within those buildings and providing leadi- leadership opportunities for our our elementary kiddos.
So so this on the elementary level too will will take away a lot of, if not eliminate, the traveling, music, art, you know, the traveling specialists?
It won't eliminate it completely.
Eliminated.
It won't eliminate it completely, but it will make a huge step to having a a full-time PE teacher at each of our elementary schools. And, you know, when you talk about uh having having a a teacher who's there, connected to the building, having the time to be be able to follow up with a group of students that maybe had some conflict and and go through some restorative uh approach with the students and and kind of bring the kids back together so that the next class will be ready and be productive. And also sending the kids back to their classroom in in a place where they're ready to dive back into that math class.
But it would avoid the person who's like the elementary special has to go to a, your building, back to Lone Pine, because they
The art PE, Spanish, uh, music teachers, they would, they would have a home. And they would service the students at their home building. And they'd be, they'd be part of that sense of belonging, they'd be a part of that community in that building. Um, you know, the the ones, I was just talking with our orchestra teacher the other day. And he, he, he was very, he's very excited about this plan, looking at, I would have one middle school that I'm concentrated on. I can really put my energies into that middle school. And yeah, I know I'd have to travel to two elementary schools that are feeding the students that come to me for sixth grade. So he'd have that four-year continuum with the kids. But his, he'd be able to really be at one building focused on the opportunities he can provide at that middle school. As opposed to being split between two different middle schools currently every other day.
Okay.
Fun, fun photos again on these slides when you look there and uh I I the one on the, in the middle there just looking at that, how the the boundaries of our district and how that once was drawn, it's it's fascinating to me. But um I appreciate the opportunity to be able to run through that again and and look forward to any other questions you may have.
I appreciate all the effort that went into this and and answering the question of why, from a student learning perspective, from a safety perspective. But I think it's important for the community to also know the why from another perspective. And the reality that we have here, and we've, we've all talked about this numerous times, is we have these four elementary schools and three middle schools that are nineteen sixties schools built to nineteen sixties standards. And Brian has come forward with the rest of the administration, identified for us, and these round numbers, I realize they're slightly off, but the math will work. Um, we're not getting into fractions tonight. That right now we have about thirty-five million dollars of critical needs to bring these nineteen sixties buildings up to nineteen sixties standards. Except we don't have the thirty-five million dollars to spend to bring these nineteen sixties buildings up to nineteen sixties standards. So where do we get that money? Well, we have roughly ninety million dollars a year of revenue and ninety million dollars a year of expenses. So to meet thirty-five million dollars of needs over the next five years, we'd really have to reach in to the money we spend for the, in the classrooms. And if we didn't have that ninety million dollars to meet ninety million dollars of expenses, and we only had eighty-three million dollars to meet ninety million dollars of expenses, then where do we start making cuts? What happens to academics in this district? What happens to programming in this district? What potentially safety happens in this district? So somewhere we need to come up with at least that thirty-five million dollars to bring us up these nineteen sixties buildings to nineteen sixties standards. But we're better than that. We don't, this isn't the time to just bring these up to nineteen sixties standards. So five years from now, we can say, great, and we're, you know, a quarter of the way through the twenty-first century, and we have nineteen sixties buildings to nineteen sixties standards. It's time in twenty twenty to start looking forward in this community, and we've talked about this a lot, and start looking at the next fifty years and saying, where is this community gonna be in twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty, and all the way out through fifty years, twenty seventy? And with this two-hundred-million-dollar bond, we can take these four buildings, four elementary schools, and condense for the reasons that you talked about to two middle schools and get us to the point when we're done with this project. We won't be at nineteen sixties buildings to nineteen sixties standards, but we're gonna be at two thousand twenty buildings built to twenty twenty to twenty seventy standards. And I think it's important for the community to realize why this needs to be done also, not just from a financial perspective, but how not doing anything is gonna cause us to spend money that we're spending on education to get to a point that five years from now, we're nowhere. And uh I think it's really important that that financial message that we've talked about so many times be part of the conversation as we go forward here, because not having those funds will impact students directly.
Cynthia?
Um, I guess a little bit different aspect of financial aspect. So when we're talking about why, um, it maybe seems like a a strange dichotomy, but I really see this through the lens of this being the fiscally responsible thing to do. Um, even at a time when we're looking at, looking to ask our community for two-hundred million, which is a huge number. But um since nineteen ninety-four, we have had to face the fact that we were looking at structural deficits. We've had to have a mindset across all those years about how we can continue to provide quality, um, you know, programming for all of our children. Preserve class size, preserve um fine arts and athletic activities that we believe our community wants for our children. And it takes pride in being able to provi- you know, continue to provide to the children and whether or not our still, children are still um attending our schools. Um, we've had to do consistent re-engineering of how we run the school district to be able to preserve those opportunities for our children. And so moving students around is not our our desire. We're trying to make smart choices that will last for long periods of time. And but no matter what the choices that we have made across those years, it has been with, you know, continuing to protect and preserve um our our programming for our children and take care of them in the process. Um, so to me, yes, it's about um instructional um choices and having, being able to continue to offer the kind of uh fine arts programs that we um are very proud to be able to have in our school district. Um, the kind of world language program we think people want for their children. Um, we wanna be sure that they're safe and we wanna be sure that we're providing the right programs long into the future. To me, our message has to, and we, and I think we should expect that there will be some some um operating uh uh costs that will be reduced as a consequence from going to three middle schools to two. We don't know what that number is just yet, but um I think that this is a a a very smart plan to be able to move us into the future.
Well, I think one other thing, uh, Jackie, Jackie?
Yeah, I think there's also something else and uh, it isn't that education is even staying steady. Because um in my new job, you know, I see right now just the leaps of how science and technology is changing more and more rapidly. Um, and and industry itself is talking about industry four-point-oh. And the the escalation of what our children will be facing in the near future. And so it isn't just even that education is the same as it is always been and the way it was when we grew up. Education now are preparing children and students for jobs that don't exist now. And the way, the the types of experiences that we need to be able to give our students must be meeting these challenges. We are a top-ranked district and we want to be a nationally renowned district. And that's why our parents come here and that's where our residents live in our area. So it isn't just that we want them to continue to have the same experiences. We actually have to rise to the challenge because uh there is a need for increasing uh skill sets and competencies that we didn't have to face, but our students will be facing as they take on tomorrow's challenges.
I think what I was gonna say, and Cynthia, um, I think we've said this in the past, that, you know, the buildings were, um, you know, these buildings are from nineteen sixties and, you know, outside of the high school, um, we've never gone out and 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 refurbished or asked the community to do anything with these buildings since the the sixties. We've pretty much just patched them up, and that's probably leading to Mark's point as to why there is thirty-five million dollars that needs to be done with these buildings just to get them to nineteen sixties standards. Cause we haven't done what we probably needed to do, and that's why, getting to your point Cynthia, it's fiscally responsible to do that now. Howard?
All right, let me try to summarize a lot of stuff that I've heard over the last fifteen, twenty minutes. So in the fifties and sixties, we had eleven elementary schools. Now we've got eleven, or four, excuse me. What's happened in the intervening fifty years? Special education did not exist. Michigan passed special education in nineteen seventy and the federal law came in nineteen seventy-five. No Child Left Behind didn't exist, that was the nineteen nineties. Security, all of these buildings were built before Sandy, or Columbine, Sandy Hook, and Marjorie, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. Preschool, preschool is what I used to, was, I went to, which was nursery school. We don't have nursery schools anymore. We didn't have an IB program. Technology, technology were overhead projectors and film strips. And I saw that with a, with a long-playing record, you know, beep, flip. We as a district have been very fiscally responsible. We have not invested in our buildings, we kept taxes low. But what did that fiscal responsibility, oh, I'm sorry, uh, before I even get to that, um, um, STEM. STEM, when I was growing up and these buildings were built, was the Apollo program, putting man on the moon. Um, robotics was science fiction, Isaac Asimov. Literally, it was fiction, it didn't exist. So back to fiscally responsible. Um, this, our prior boards and administrations have not updated these buildings, which is forced, you use the word retrofit. And another word for retrofit is jury-rigged. And I looked up jury-rigged just now, makeshift or improvised. And that's what we've done. We have put square pegs in round holes and and rearranged buildings with the existing infrastructure to make it work. The fiscally responsible thing at this point for this board is to say, enough of that, let's move forward. And do it the right way, un-jury-rig the process, move the elementary skids, kids back to K-five like they, of course, K, uh, K-five like they originally were. And it, cause all of these jury-rigging has caused additional cost and lack of academic programs that is kindly, kind of trans, or or opaque. No one really sees it on the, you know, the back end of what you guys have to go through to make it work as best you can. But that leads to less choice and more cost, exactly what we don't want. So this is the ability for us to basically do nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties for the twenty-first century. Do it all over again as, but not with a hundred percent clean sheet of paper. We're not tearing things down, but we are retro, we are rearranging buildings and spending um economically to do it for, as Mark said, and he's absolutely right, for the next twenty, thirty, forty years going to the future.
Jennifer?
So to, you guys have stated it so eloquently, I just wanna put a little bit more perspective on it. As you just said, Howard, it, we're really at a once-in-a-fifty-to-sixty-year crossroads. Um, this is not uh something we just think is about bright shiny objects. This is something that over many, many years, we have studied and postponed to be fiscally responsible. And there is no more postponing of this project. And if you look at the national landscape, the Michigan landscape, the Oakland County landscape, the scale of this project and the itemization of this project, the, these are things that our sister districts have been doing for years. Um, here in Michigan, at least tracing back to nineteen ninety-four, when the changing of the state funding model made it much harder to um to provide for capital needs. I just found out from Tina the other day that Michigan is one of only twelve of the fifty states that does not have a systematic mechanism either at the, in in the state government to provide for public school districts' capital needs. So that is a, that is a major challenge. And so what I want to express to the community, that that this district and this board has has taken pains over the years not to ask. Um, and that we are asking now because it it is absolutely necessary, it's absolutely customary, it's the right thing to do. Um, or else we will deteriorate, excuse me, and fall behind. And and educationally-minded people won't wanna move to this community anymore. And that is something that I don't think anyone who lives in Bloomfield wants on any day of the week. And so that is, that is the reality of of where we are right now.
Lisa?
I actually have a question. I I saw pieces, many pieces in this presentation of updates that you've done. Um, and and I know that's the purpose of this presentation for the board is to update us. So I'm wondering if um in your, in your uh interactions with community, with the community through Speakers Bureau and through these many, many, many uh meetings that we're having, if you can give us some feedback about things that you're here feedback about things that you're hearing. I've been to a few, and I've got some thoughts, but I'm wondering if, what kinds of issues are people bringing up? What things do we have to consider as a board? And what changes have you made in the way you're either presenting or in the actual way you're planning?
Well, I think, so as, as we've gone through so many different presentations over the last few months, it's still really conceptual, and I think that that is probably the first thing I think of to your question there, Lisa, is, you know, for example, robotics center. Our robotics headquarters is at the Loser site right now. That's something that's evolving as we're looking at the different plans and looking at the different assets that we have within our district to see where would that be best utilized or best, would it best serve the future? The biggest thing for me right now is that, is making sure that the word gets out, the information gets out, because I feel right now, people have bits and pieces, and some people don't have the full picture, because they just haven't either seen a presentation or been able to take the time to dig into the materials that are out there now online. Because I think you, feedback I've received is, you know, I guess basically I'm looking at many of the families that I'm interacting with, they're like, hoping, let's get rolling with this, because I want my kids to benefit from it. They see the opportunities that are coming. They also see, there's major concerns. The families that feed West Hills have major concerns about safety and security, and they are, they're very excited, number one, to get moving on that. And I think, you know, that's a piece that, that every, every single person I've talked to has said, okay, let's move with this. It's obviously, the most important thing is making sure our kids are safe and secure. And so I guess the feedback, a couple of things I'm seeing is, one, I'm, as we've really generated a lot more to be shared with, with the community now, and we have the robust website now, and the videos that were released as recent as today, I just encourage people to really dig into that, because I think you don't even have to dig into it too deeply to get a sense of what it entails. I think watching those three videos, looking at a couple of the slides or information sheets that are online will really inform, inform the public.
So the meetings that I've been to, they've been very positive, but I'm worried about reaching people that aren't connected through the schools. So I'm wondering if, you know, have we thought of linking our website to the township or to West Bloomfield, to all of our municipal websites that feed, you know, our school district, so that we can reach people beyond the, you know, just the schools?
Right.
Another thing is, you know, you keep coming out with these really good slides that people want to share, like one, maybe, without the entire deck, maybe, you know, maybe they want to put it on social media. Can you make somehow PDFs that people can easily share of? The one that I really liked, I liked all of them, but the one I really liked this time was the one that you called the space changes one. I thought that that was really...
Space challenges.
Yeah, challenges. And it reminded me of doing exhibition at Conant, which went from fifth grade to fourth grade.
Right.
And Conant's one of the two elementary schools that still has a fourth grade, but it, I did it when there was a fifth grade, and I did it when there was a fourth grade. And as great as our students are and our teachers are, you can't do as much with a fourth grader as you can with a fifth grader.
Right.
There's a year difference.
Absolutely.
And it showed in the, anyway. The feedback I've gotten really from people, and it is, to be honest, it's mainly parents who are, who I've seen come to these meetings.
Connected to the school.
But they said that there is just a huge disconnect between what we expect of our students and our buildings. We're expecting them to be more than, we make do with our buildings, but what we're asking them is to excel. We're asking them to be the best and to be great and to live up to the potential. And what we're providing them with is something, there comes a time when your facilities really hamper what you're, and we are there.
Right.
We've reached there a long time ago, but we're there now. Yeah.
The collaboration piece, it's just, it's not uncommon to see kids laying in the middle of the hallway, working together.
We are not giving them the facilities that they need to be able to live up to the expectations that we, as a community and as a district, have and as parents have. You know, we expect them to, you know, perform in a certain way and just really to take advantage of all of these different programs, and they're, they're beyond hampered by the facilities. They're hurting our kids. They're not neutral. They're hurting them.
And it's an equity issue also.
I think this whole thing can be summarized in just a couple of sentences. This isn't just about current students and current parents. This is about the entire Bloomfield Hills Schools community. And we have a problem here that's been 60 years in the making. We're not asking that it be paid overnight. It's going to be paid over 30 years. So we're talking about a multi-generational bond for a multi-generational problem for what's clearly a multi-generational community, and it's our responsibility at this time to look forward and to fix that problem.
Yeah. I just want to say one more thing before we, there are some great ideas that are also coming out of these meetings. It's too many for me to list, but one that I really loved was with the new pool that we're building, if it could be accessible. Someone came up with that. It was fabulous. So, I mean, I don't know if you're hearing stuff like that, too, but great ideas.
On my list, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act.
Right, good point.
504s, 504s didn't exist.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were my co-presenters tonight, so thank you. I appreciate that. Clearly, it's a very well-educated board here.
Thank you. Before we get to board business, which won't take a lot of time, I'd like to make an amendment to add a public comment. We do have someone who wants to.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alex? Thanks, Andy.
So mine concerns something that is about 1/10,000th the monetary value.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sure. My name is Alex Lindstrom. Good evening, everyone. And I'm a senior at the International Academy Okma, and last year, or I'm going to be speaking about the esports club in my school. I was just going to say that what I'm talking about concerns something 1/10,000th the size of what you're just talking about, but I'm not sure I can talk for that amount of time, 1/10,000th the time, so we'll see. So last year, an esports club was created at my school. It was relatively small, and while leading this club this year, it has grown in size greatly. We won a tournament, a national tournament at HSL, which is our high school esports league. And in the first year of the club's creation, and suddenly we've become one of the most well-funded clubs in terms of assets, and shortly thereafter grew to become the most popular. Our winnings included $20,000 in gaming computers for my school. That includes six desktops and six laptops. However, it has been a very, very uphill battle for me to provide these winnings to my fellow classmates. I've spent days after school until eight o'clock mopping and rearranging our school's server room in order to provide students with the only space that our school can offer for these devices. I've sent nearly 100 emails between staff members and I trying to utilize these winnings properly. I'm very proud of all the work that I've done for the club so far, but I've run into a roadblock that has brought me here. It's been over a year since we've won these devices, and they're still not properly connected to our network. They do not, and they, they're not in a very hospitable place for students to use them, and because the space is also very small, we have been forced to sell the desktops online. My hope is that we can sell the desktops and use that money to reduce the funding for people to participate in esports and to make the room more welcoming. For example, we're, the thing, as like subtle as it sounds, the thing that we are most looking forward to fixing is there's a flickering light in the room that like people cannot tolerate. Some people have to leave the room because they get headaches because of it and whatnot. And additionally, I would like to spend this money on other devices that the students can enjoy while they're waiting for their rides home. As the International Academy is a really small school, it's, and is prestigious, some students live almost an hour away in the line of school to get in and out of school. It's almost 15, 20 minutes, so many, many students roam around in the library after school and whatnot, and I just think it would be, I think it would be the right thing to do, to provide these winnings for everyone to be able to use after school, and then our esports team can plan them, like can reserve times to plan them whenever they want. But I've not, I have not come here because I haven't tried to do these things on my own. I've spent countless hours trying to communicate with my principal and other faculty in order to sell these desktops to someone. I've spent even more time communicating through my librarian and the IT, the Bloomfield Hills IT services, people from my school, trying to get someone to simply provide our room with an ethernet plug that we can connect all our devices to. Currently, we can connect to the Wi-Fi, but this renders them about as useful as all the Chromebooks, as we cannot play video games on them. We require faster ethernet connection to the internet. Every time I approach the IT services people with a solution, all I hear back is that we are simply not high priority, which is, this is understandable. However, I cannot let $20,000 worth of devices sit around and collect us with, with about 90% of their value. Trying to sell them also seems to be hardly an option either, as it appears we cannot create a PayPal account to sell these devices on eBay or any other online service. To my knowledge, all it would require the IT services people is to remotely connect to the services at the IA and then open up a single port on the server rack, and then my librarian could plug an ethernet cable into that plug, and then we can, from there, can plug all of our devices into there, and that would be all of the problems solved. We don't need to be on a special network or anything like that. We just need to have an ethernet connection as opposed to a Wi-Fi, one on Wi-Fi, because the Wi-Fi is much too slow for us to be able to utilize these devices. Personally, I feel like, I feel as if this mountain that I'm trying to, the mountain that I'm climbing to succeed with this club has turned into a vertical ledge, and thus $20,000 in rewards for our club has been diminishing in value for over a year now. I'm very happy, overall, I'm very happy with all that our club has done for the stressed students at my international baccalaureate school, but I want to do more, and from here, I have too many forces against me to make much more progress. Basically, I have three concerns about things that I may not be able to do by myself. Two are pressing and immediate, and one is more peripheral and long-term. The first being to get our rewards on this, our awards on the school network, and the second being to sell our desktops to anyone in the district. I tried to sell them to any of the club members. We sold one of them, and we managed to turn those funds into a TV and a game console, which people love after school, but we can do more, as the rest of the desk, the other five desktops are sitting there unopened, because we don't have enough space in the server room to be able to use them at all. And as a more long-term concern, looking at receiving funding for a club to reduce, to reduce the cost of esports, to make it more accessible for students. This year, nearly 100 people approached me, expressing interest in the club, but after hearing that it would cost them almost that, about $100, to participate, over 70% of them backed off, or nearly 70% of them backed off. Esports teaches teamwork skills and allows students to take something that they love as a hobby seriously, and all games are played outside of school. So our club does not affect students' academic performance whatsoever. We haven't had any trouble fitting in games with all of our, all of the homework that we have to do at the IA. That was the end of my script.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, board business?
Just so you know, someone will be getting back to you, I'm sure, so they can discuss this further. Mary?
Over email?
No, I'll come visit you at the IA.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, like, pull me out of class?
I'll try to get you before class, but I'll set up with Ms. Gibson, so you know a day I'm coming, so we can meet in the office. I know you don't want to miss school, although you love a snow day.
I do love a snow day.
And we'll figure out what the solution is.
Everyone loves a snow day. All right.
We will be in school tomorrow.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Oh, thank you for that. Really, thank you. I know it's not normally protocol to respond, but thank you for doing that.
Board, so we have board business. We have one thing, approval of the 2020, 2021 board meeting calendar. Do I have a motion?
I think that the board, that the calendar for the 2020, 2021 Board of Education meetings be approved as presented.
Second. Discussion.
I just wanted to mention that there was a slight adjustment over the last few days in November of moving some dates around, so it didn't conflict with an MASP conference.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Adjournment.
So.